We have ordinances of second reading. Ordinance 111-401, in ordinance to amend as supplemented the vice general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic, Schedule 39, parking zones for handicapped persons, adding three handicap parking zones to 98 Power Street, 28 A-Mine Street, and 74 Plum Street. We are leaving one handicap parking zone, Zone 285 Cancer. We have an ordinance on first reading, ordinance 111-402, it's an ordinance to approve a long-term tax extension and financial agreement between the city of New Brunswick and 90 New Street Urban Renewal. We have resolutions, Resolution 450, approve agenda amendments, Resolution 451, approved amendment 102514 to 11714, Resolution 452, authorize refund for the GTE tax sales certificate, Resolution 453, amendment of resolution 051-416, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $875 to Benedict and Alman for police officer James Pister in the matter of Michael Ball Posco versus the city of New Brunswick from $24,769.50 to $25,577. Resolution 454, approve amendment of resolution 091-440, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $578 to Benedict and Alman for police director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Stephen Middleton versus the city of New Brunswick from $7,104 to $7,682. Resolution 455, approve amendment of resolution 091-439, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $850 to Benedict and Alman for police director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Victor Rodriguez versus the city of New Brunswick from $2,652 to $3,502. Resolution 456, approve amendment of resolution 091-437, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,895.50 to Lawrence Peterman for police officer Daniel Massan in the matter of Deloche Senior Berry, the state versus the city of New Brunswick from $7,701 to $9,596.50. Resolution 457, approve amendment of resolution 091-438, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $2,116.50 to Lawrence Peterman for detective Christopher Bornheimer in the matter of Rodriguez versus the city of New Brunswick from $6,545 to $8,661.50. Resolution 458, approve request for use of city property and closure of streets requested by New Brunswick Recreation, Rogers University, the location is Brooklyn Park and various streets for the Big Shield Five-Face Roadways to raise funds for Christmas gift for all the privileged children, food banks, soup kitchens, and 500 programs in New Brunswick. Strict closure for the shaven heavy to embark at 10th Senior Street, the date is on Saturday, December 6, 2014, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 depart, and strict closure 6:00 a.m. to 11:00, police extra duty required. Resolution 459, authorize refund on intermodal service contract with the Bureau of County Department of Public Safety and Health for public health services, the term is January 1, 2015 to December 31, 2015, and the amount is $232,244. Resolution 460, approve resolution for acceptance of long-term tax extension application for 90 New Street. Resolution 461 has been held at the request of the mayor. Resolution 462, approve person-for-person transfer of legal license, this is from Darrell LLC trading as Darrells to Mark Darnian Hospital County LLC 302 George Street. Resolution 463, approve authorization to advertise requested by Public Works to furnish and deliver of one real-order breakfast truck. Resolution 464, approve of board of contract with Atlantic Salt Inc. for treated rock salt for public work and water utility harness, the term is 12 months commencing on December 1, 2014 and ending November 3, 2015, not to exceed $89,600. Resolution 465, approve of board of contract with NASTAS Brothers for temperature control, H-bag lanes, and repairs, the term is 12 months, commencing November 20, 2014 and ending November 19, 2015, which can be extended on a yearly basis for up to two additional years, not to exceed $32,500. Resolution 466, approve amendment of resolution 011-480, the reason is Boarding Department requesting the additional amount of $29,000 with Univer USA for sodium hypochlorite corollage and delivery of chemicals for bulk feed facilities, not to exceed $29,000, and approval of this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Resolution 467, approve rejection of this unauthorized to rebid requested by the Public Works Department for milling of various city streets. Resolution 468, approve of board of contract with specialty graphics to furnish and deliver work uniforms for public works, water utility, parts and shaped trees engineered in the ivory and polish department, the garage attendant, the term is 12 months commencing on November 20, 2014, and ending November 19, 2015, not to exceed $33,986. Resolution 469, approve amendment of resolution 081-419, the reason is to pay additional amount of $62,886.21 for between use materials for roadway repairs with Estabola Asphalt Company to furnish and delivery between use materials, not to exceed $62,886.21, and approval of this amendment will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Resolution 470, authorize purchase by fire department under state contract 8-83909 from Motorola Solutions for four desktop chargers, not to exceed $520. Resolution 471, approve of board of contract for furnish and delivery of between use materials with Estabola Asphalt, not to exceed $169,350 to Trap Rock Industry, not to exceed $21,215. The term is a 12-month period commencing November 20, 2014 and ending November 19, 2015. Resolution 472 is being held at the request of the city administrator. Resolution 473, approve amendment of resolution 061-457, change order number one with Lucas Brothers Brothers for Sudari Street Law, Waiting Group, and Phase Two from Fresh Tree to Joyce Kimmer Avenue, and Livingston Avenue to Commercial Avenue, the amount is $7,111 to $44, and approval of this change of order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Resolution 474, approve amendment of resolution 091-426, the reason is new dates needed due to equipment delays. Approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Sky High Erestors and Equipment, the reason is to place a crane in parking lot at 501 George Street to hoist H-bag equipment of the roof of the J&amp;J building on Saturday, November 29, 2014, with an alternate date of Saturday, December 6, 2014, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Resolution 475, authorize purchase by fire department under state contract 8-8946 from firefighters one limited liability company doing business as FF1 professional safety services for protected turnout year, not to exceed $207,598.30. Resolution 476, resolution authorizing the cancellation of various outstanding checks. Resolution 477, approve 159 budget insertion, the Bureau of Justice Assistance, for fiscal year 2014, public group best partnership, and the amount is $14,258.94. Resolution 478, authorize purchase by police department under Crown for Police Corporation by assistance for Ramon Chevrolet, for one 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe, not to exceed $31,800. Resolution 479, approve payment for emergency procurement water utility, this is for the repair of a 24-inch water main at Weston Mill with B&amp;W Construction of New Jersey, not to exceed $18,438.69. Resolution 480, approve payment for emergency procurement water utility for a water main break repair at Joyce Kimmer Avenue between Judy Street and Ellen Street with B&amp;W Construction of New Jersey, not to exceed $38,417.92. Resolution 481, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Underground Utilities Corporation, the reason is to complete construction of the H-H water main extension on Nielsen Street and completing the web tap timing to the existing main on New Street. This is for Saturday, November 22, with an alternate date of Saturday, December 6, 2014, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Resolution 482, approve request for solicitation of funds requested by the Salvation Army, this is to help the need in our community, the dates are November 21 through December 24, 2014, times and locations Monday, Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., and 6:00 p.m. and 2:00 a.m. at the train station, and Saturday and Sunday from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at[693.82]
Council gives the water director the resources he needs to address it because it is a serious problem. The next, the very next item, number eighteen, is the milling of various city streets. Can you identify some of those streets where, what streets are going to be repaved?
I can't, but we're rebidding the matter because the bid came in higher than we have funds available for it, but I can certainly get that information from the public works director.
Okay, that will be appreciated.
We'll give that information for you, Mr. Cramble.
Thank you, and just while we're on the topic, is Hamilton Street going to get paved this year?
Mr. Goldman?
No.
How are we concerned with that?
We're going to try to get it done, but unfortunately, the weather turned cold and we're not going to be able to finish it this year.
Oh, it's going to die ourselves?
It will be done in the spring.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's a shame. People were promised that it would be addressed this year. It's in very sorry shape and it is, when people come to New Brunswick, it's the first thing they see on Hamilton Street is that the road instantly goes from being smooth to being unsafe and dangerous for a car. And it's a bad way to welcome people to New Brunswick and to Middlesex County. So I hope that's addressed and I hope that future promises are kept. I also would like to ask about number twenty-nine, ends in seven-eight, the purchase of a vehicle for the police. Can somebody tell me how many vehicles the police have purchased this year?
Mr. Lockman, do we have?
Somewhere between five and ten, I don't know the exact number.
Okay, and are there any plans for purchases being made of, let's say, vehicles larger than an SUV?
Not that I'm aware of. There'll be some additional purchases of smaller vehicles like pickup trucks in two thousand and fifteen, but I don't know anything on the radar for something larger than an SUV.
You mean throughout the city, for the departments?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean for the police.
No, just the police department?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask about thirty-six, ends in four eighty-five. Can somebody explain what this, the purpose of this?
This is the one with three funds sufficient in this, the different payments.
That happens all the time. Two different payments that have to be adjusted or refunded. I don't like anything about this particular one.
So it's just that they made it.
They paid their taxes twice.
Instead of one, huh?
They paid their taxes twice.
Twice, exactly. It appears at that, so we have to be generalized today.
Okay, is it true that the banker's involved with this company?
Thirty-six. Do we know that?
I don't know that.
I don't know that answer.
Okay, I believe he is. I just wanted to put that on the record and make sure that everybody knows that before they.
We don't find that, we don't know, so.
Act on that, okay. Number thirty-eight, ends in four eighty-seven. What's the purpose of this joint funding agreement?
It's an annual contract with the Department of the Interior. They put some gauging equipment on the Weston's Mill Dam and they monitor the water flow over the dam. We're required to keep a passing flow of a certain value, which escapes me at the moment, but believe it or not, we pay them for the purpose of monitoring the water that comes over the dam. It's an annual contract that's been in place for better than twenty years.
Thank you, and which dam was it? I'm sorry?
Weston's Mill.
Weston's Mill, okay, great. And then the final question, the final resolution. What's the purpose of this professional services agreement? Who's the company and what services are they supplying the city?
Mr. Lockman.
I'm going to ask if Mr. Peddix would.
Mr. Peddix, is he there? I didn't see you there. Mr. Peddix, can you comment on this?
Sure. Actually, we, when we actually went out and sold notes in the summer, it was at that time that our bond council advised us that the new Securities and Exchange Commission laws had just come out and we went out and we asked Peddix advisors to do a research about compliance. We're out, now there's a, we have to actually have a contract in place and this is authorizing the contract for that. It's a thousand dollar contract.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Could you just identify who the bond council is for the city?
It's Wes Goldman and Spitzer. The actual person who's assigned to us is Lisa Gora.
Gora.
Gora, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Good evening, Frank Bright, Twenty-One Harville Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey. We have four resolutions that add up to about forty-five thousand dollars that affect the police department. What are we doing to practically stop these lawsuits from happening?
Mr. Hamilton, please.
I don't know how you can stop them from happening. We hope that what's going on on the street, this department, the new service and in the operational sense is of the highest order. Certainly, we were certified latest year in that connection, but there are people who are going to figure suffer losses or feel that they've been mistreated and able to sue. And we don't like to pay out that money any more than Mr. Bright likes to see it paid out.
So are we developing, six weeks ago I asked about this, these resolutions before and I asked, are we developing our people? Are we sitting down and talking into, how do these lawsuits happen and how did we, how can we prevent it? By better training of personnel and, you know, detentioning situations down on the street? What are we doing with that respect?
Captain Miller, I don't know if you have that answer, what has been done and what it continues to do, because that's actually the police director.
Okay. Then the right to argue these lawsuits, these lawsuits haven't been resolved. There's nothing here to say anybody did anything wrong until, you know, the court of law makes her decision. But the police department is constantly training. We train on all aspects of, you know, law, excessive orders, a whole variety of things.
So there's training going ongoing all the time under the police department, so.
I heard the same answers when Marshall and Chinchilla were found guilty of committing their crimes and they were police officers. What's changed since then?
Well, right now, Mr. Bright, we're still looking at all these, the answers that you state in terms of the lawsuits that you asked pertaining to these resolutions. We already gave you that that's, at this point, the police department continues to have training and it's an ongoing matter that they need to provide to their officers. So the more details are back, we don't have it at this point.
Do the police officers engage in one-on-one career training with their supervisor?
Captain, do they need one-on-one with their supervisor and it's ongoing training?
I'd like Mr. Bright to elaborate on what he means by that.
I guess he needs like a supervision. If you go to a situation and they don't have.
No disrespect, ma'am, but you can't guess what he's trying to say.
No, no, I'm just trying, that's what I got it from him, but Mr. Bright, he appeared to elaborate.
Yeah, one-on-one is a human resources technique. It's on Google, it's everywhere, where you sit down, and I mentioned this six weeks ago, I got the city council has a Google data research that Mr. Lockman said he knew what one-on-one is, but clearly he didn't. You sit down with your subordinates every two weeks and you address their career arc. And by doing that, you understand if they're fit for duty, you understand what their concerns are, what's happening in their life and to make sure that emergent and the best practices are used. Do we use one-on-one as a human resource tool in the police department?
As far as making, you know, a timeframe where someone sits down with their supervisor every two weeks, no, that does not happen. However, it's the squad's full under span of control where a supervisor oversees his squad, which usually encompasses six to each individual. He works with them every day, he interacts with them every day, so, and they clock every day. So the supervisor engage how his subordinate is proceeding and if they are fit for duty.
He has to engage in these resolutions, Mr. Bright.
Yeah, well, if we engage in one-on-ones, we'd see less of these. Dealing with your subordinates on a daily basis turns out to be just a few minutes every day because they have a job to do and you have a job to do. That's why one-on-ones are so critical. It takes time out to actually sit down and talk to them and actually see how they're doing. And it's shown to be a very productive tool throughout business. Getting onto these resolutions again, benchmarking, do we go see how cities are doing, local cities are doing, that are, have no lawsuits engaged?
Mr. Hamilton?
No. We are in constant contact with our colleagues in other communities, specifically on that note.
So the concept here is, we do not see how communities that are actually doing the best practices, actually how they, how they overcome and reduce these costs? Is that, is that what Mr. Hamilton said?
Mr. Hamilton said that he hasn't looked at those municipalities, but otherwise we do conduct best practices in the city of New Brunswick.
Maybe Captain Miller can speak to the accreditation program, which in my mind is equivalent to a best practice situation.
The accreditation program is a program that the police department went through. We were accredited in February of two thousand thirteen. I believe there's somewhere a little over one hundred best practices points that the police department had to show that they do those best practices. I think it was a hundred and eleven, but don't quote me on that number. It was about a ten-month process where we were evaluated by outside sources and what we, we show and there's proofs that you have to present, that we get the hundred and eleven points and we became accredited. And we're, we're going to renew our accreditation in December of two thousand fifteen, every three years.
Once again, that's a believable point, but accreditation is not benchmarking, so when you're not, when you're not doing one-on-one field, you go out and you find out what the best you're doing. And I recommend the city council do that because it saves forty-five thousand dollars. Clearly, if I were to ask anyone of you for forty-five thousand dollars to borrow, not even to have, you guys would walk, I'm sure, I know I would, if somebody asked me for forty-five grand. It's a lot of money and these things have a positive waterfall effect. It's called extended condition. So once you understand how to solve this problem, you can apply it to the rest of the city for a person that has a much improved standard of living. Getting back to the sodium hypochloride question, residuals, I heard the word residuals. I understand what sodium hypochloride is and what it's used for, but I'd like to hear, what are residuals?
That's a measure of the, when we use the term residuals, the free chlorine, the chlorine that's available after all the demand, anything that was, that the chlorine oxidized and killed is available in the mains for any bacteria that might start to try to grow or anything that might leak into the mains.
So hypochloride is correctly memorized, is used for organic matter, correct?
Just actin, right?
Hypochloride is bleach.
Yes, it is.
It's about, the product we use is about three times stronger than your household.
So, once again, the question still stands, hypochloride is used to kill organic matter? Yes or no? Matt O'Cherry?
Among, among other things, yes.
All right, so we have high organic in the water?
That's not, can you just clarify maybe the energy for some of this?
Chlorine has to be available in the water should bacteria or organic matter be introduced in main breaks and the like.
So even though sodium hypochloride is used to kill organics and we didn't have, well, the output of sodium hypochloride, you're saying that we did not have higher organics in our testing?
We're required to maintain a residual leaving the treatment plant of no less than point two milligrams per liter and no more than four point oh.
So the point is, is we need to make sure that we have enough to continue providing that.
Right. And, and when we do certify that, has the city been found to falsify information pertaining to that?
Okay.
Now, as I understand it, the city was found falsifying information on the reports by saying certain things were okay and aren't drinking water where they were.
We, the licensed operator was held accountable for falsifying certain documents that had to be submitted to the DDP.
So you're asking the public to believe you now, but you didn't tell us you before?
Again, the licensed operator was the one who.
Once again, once again, if we use benchmarking, if we use one-on-one, I think the efficiency and the quality life of this town needs a lot of improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Any questions about the resolutions?
Hi, my name is Haley Boer, I'm from New Brunswick. My question is about item four. Can you just please explain the nature of this?
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, the plaintiff in this case was in void court after war. He was asked to leave void court. And he was left, he was left some evidence that he was intoxicated. He didn't cross at a safe place where he could have. He was hit by either two or three quarters and sustained very, very, very serious, it would take his life, a very, very serious injury. That's what the case was about.
Two or three police cars or cars driven by buses?
Several vehicles that were passing on route eighteens.
Okay. Can you explain what the amounts for the legal fees are for?
Mr. Hamilton?
Well, these particular fees are the Benedict and Aldman. Mr. Aldman was the personal counsel to Officer Pister on the issue of punitive damages. Officer Pister was dismissed from the case. He was not found guilty of anything, was not found liable for anything.
My next question is about item number five. Can you explain the nature of this, please?
No, two questions.
If I recall right, that was a dispute by Officer Middleton about not having been promoted.
Oh, another question? Yes, did he say why he was not being promoted?
I, I don't recall any, I never interviewed Officer, I know Officer Middleton, I don't know what his claim was.
Is there somewhere where I could find the police report for that?
I'd ask you to find a police report when you go to the law department. I'll ask my secretary to pull out the claim notice and the complaint and you can take a look at that and see what it says.
Okay, and I could find that at your office, is that?
The law department here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about resolutions, both empty before you hear? The same main address and not by the school, I think.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Hi, I'm Anthony Larivina, Twenty Jefferson Avenue, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit late. Did you already do the ordinances?
Yes.
Okay, so can I ask about resolution one-one-one-four-six-zero? It's page three, second from the bottom, to approve a resolution for acceptance of a long-term tax exemption, application for ninety new street. How long is that tax exemption going to go for?
Two questions, but this is the preliminary step, except in the application and the agreement, if it's approved on second reading, it will be for thirty years.
Okay, and are there's going to be rental properties or for purchase?
Yes.
I believe they're apartments, or some retail.
Has the, has the council examined, seen the plans for this building?
I have not.
Okay, I ask that you hold vote until you at least review the plans for the project. While it is going to provide housing in New Brunswick, and I understand that we want more of that, it is a horribly ugly building. And I really hope that you send them back to the drawing board on this and it's within your power to hold up their process. And I understand the planning board is more geared to handle this situation, but again, you're involved in this and you can, you can at least pump the brakes just a little bit to maybe at least review it yourself and see what you think about the project. I also don't feel that, that a building of this nature, I don't know if it's going to build this luxury high-rise, however you want to call it, but it is in downtown New Brunswick and most of the buildings that go up in downtown New Brunswick are quite expensive to rent. I don't feel that they should be exempt from paying taxes. Is it a total exemption, a partial exemption?
Mr. Hamilton? It's very narrow, Mr..
It's not a total exemption, the rental portion for housing is at exactly ten or twelve percent of the gross revenues and for the other properties for ten or five percent. It's two different portions of what.
It's an exemption of ten to twelve percent of what they would have to pay the city on one portion, or, okay, I'm understanding you.
They're paying a amount based upon those revenues.
Okay, so the money, the profits that they take, revenues?
Not necessarily the profits that we income.
Is the income generated by?
Okay, so they get, they get a little bit off in that, in the formula that figures out how much tax they would have to pay? Is that?
They pay less than they would if they were taxed conventionally.
Again, I think that that should be brought out in writing what the formula is, how much money is going to be shorted from the city before it's voted on. I think that, you know, the public services in the, in the city are great, but they could use a little bit more cash, especially the school system. And I know a majority of profit tax and taxes in the city go towards the school system and I think that the, the school system is deserving of, of, of full payment, especially if people are living the high life here in New Brunswick. They should, they should have to pay to live, to live nicely and, and for some education for our, for our young people, that they can eventually live the high life here in New Brunswick. So please, I ask you to just hold that vote until at least you review the, the plans and if you can have some numbers in writing so we can see exactly how much. It's only two weeks, really not going to hurt in that bad if you wind up approving it next, next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for totally being here, Bruce.
Yeah, so it will be another one in two weeks, we're going to talk about it, that's what I wanted to.
Okay, so we have.
Just to introduce it, so you have two weeks to do that.
All right, and for the two weeks from now, will the, will a picture of this building be available and the numbers perhaps?
We could get some information on the numbers for you. I don't know if the picture needs to try to see, but we could get to the numbers.
Well, I, I implore the council to take a look at the plans and, and read about the building and see what kind of building it's going to be and how much possibly affordable housing is going to be in it, that, that type of thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the party wishes to address the council or Mr. Cramble? Mr. Cramble, you already addressed the council, the five minutes.
And if I may, I did not use the full five minutes and if I may, a couple of things came up, testimony was given that I'd like to.
We will have to then come back because at this point, unless the council has any agreements, I stand in a minute. If you say that you only give us four, I give you a minute.
Okay. There's just two very quick issues, so.
On the resolutions?
Yes. Things that were just said, yes. Thank you very much. I would like to start my second thing with what Mr. Larivina said and pointing out that in fact, the, when a tax payment or tax exemption is granted, no funds go to the school from that building. And I think that that is something you should really closely scrutinize. I know it's come up before and I think that the schools need the resources. I agree with him. And the second thing I did, we said that the licensed operator of the city of New Brunswick has been held accountable. I would like to ask, is he still an employee of the city?
Not yet.
He's been suspended without pay since the date of the incident, I believe, June two thousand twelve, is it? I forget the date, but he's still suspended without pay.
And the hearing, has the hearing been set? Do we know anything about that?
The hearing is contingent upon the state action that may be pending against him.
Okay, so I don't think it's really fair to say he's been held accountable. If he has not been indicted, he has not even lost his job yet.
I don't think anybody said accountable. And if I said something, what I said was that he must have won and did it, he wasn't done that.
I believe it was Mr. Lockman who said that the licensed operator had been held accountable and I, it stood out to me as something that.
Okay, Mr. Cramble, you can have.
Should not, should not.
Thank you. At this point, any other member of the party who would like to address the council, resolution four fifty-four eighty-eight? Have you not? Local?
Councilmember. Sure.
Sorry. Oh. Yes, four fifty-four.
So no name?
Your phone?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar? Yes.
At this point, there's only one item for discussion for the council, which is the proposed twenty fifteen six thousand new schedule. Do you have any challenges with the schedule that is proposed?
It's the cleanest one I have ever seen of that. It's all first and third, when we drop the same time.
So there's nothing that. Okay, so we are all in agreement, Mr. Hamilton, you have the.
We are the next agenda, then for your doctor.
Yes.
And then we adopt.
At the next, okay. At this time, this is the party portion part of the meeting, just before the party comes to speak to the council. Let me remind you that please, when you come up to the podium, you have five minutes to address the council, state your name and address. I just want to make sure that anybody who comes into the podium, at a point that if the person speaking is, does not acknowledge that they have five minutes, or at any point they come to disorder the person, we're going to ask you to stop. If you don't stop, we're going to ask you to resume the meeting and if the person refuses to leave the meeting, we're going to ask an officer to escort you out of the meeting. So at this time, the floor is open.
Good evening. I want to respect the five minutes, so I'm going to move quickly, take the break in the spirit of this meeting. And sometimes it seems like I'm back in college and I, and the level of education and learning things is always good. But I'm here, I actually, along with Dr. Charles, is congratulate and thank several members of the city council for helping with the Dr. King project that we worked so hard for, for the last two years. And I don't want to make a speech, I'm not here for entertainment and I'm not here for politics today. I can tell the Dr. King is very serious situation, especially with the Ferguson situation coming down. We're looking for solutions. As a former police officer, I always like to find solutions and deal with facts. But at the other time, from working with this project with Dr. King, I just wanted three members of the city council to stand up who was with me every step of the way. And a lot of times, not just with me, but the Joe team, Nation Islam, they voted with their feet. When people say you don't do anything and you find people out there with their feet in the community, up and out standing, where people can read, that's the real deal. So I'd like the Councilman Anderson to stand up, Glenn Fleming and Rebecca. On August twenty-fourth, the city, the city named Dr. King Corner Sanford and George Comber Avenue as Dr. King Corner. But Anderson, you came to, at three events we gave, you came to everyone, because I keep track of that, you know, people up there. And all the readings came and I have some, with our own money, we did with our own budget, some pictures that we want to give you and evidence that you were out there. On August twenty-fourth, we marched from a one-day-life church on George to Sanford and George Comber Avenue. Glenn Fleming worked hard, Rebecca, you know, you guys worked hard. People have reported to me and that was the best time of their life, with the pictures we had. I've never seen people so happy before, didn't have no problems, but we're looking for vision. In order to correct names nowadays, you have to have vision to do that. And I always think ten, fifteen years ahead, but you need cooperation and support from people. So I'd just like to give you these boards that we made up of Dr. King and let you know that I'm very grateful and thank, and I have some extra pictures here. One, Rebecca, you, you looked pretty good at that. You know, I looked at that picture and she looked pretty good at that. She was out there. And the community, if you look at it, the community was out. And we have other events, that was step three, we have step four coming up on the ten, and if you stay with us, you'll see we'll learn something and we're bringing people together. Just. Uh, just out of respect, Dr. Charles, 'cause the fire department was out there, and Dr. Charles, I'd like to, uh, present a board to, uh, the fire director.
Director, thank you.
Just wanna give our fire director, Robert Raw, a token of appreciation for helping out always, uh, you and the firemen in the city of New Brunswick also helping out with, you know, community events, so on behalf of James Neal and also Mohamed Miles and the Nation of Islam, I want to present you with that token of appreciation, thank you.
Thank you. Just to share and then I'm outta here, the fire department march in the, uh, in the program that we have, and you learn a lot from pictures, you know? And if you see the little boy over here on the side when the fire department marching very proudly and the little boy was standing on the side, he tried to get in step with him, you know, I mean, this is what we have to do in order to show our children that there's a way out of the community, you set live examples. And like I said, thank you for voting with your feet, that's what government is all about, politicians being out there with the people, I'm gonna say people-ticians, you know, that's out there with the people. I was proud and, uh, me and my wife, she wanted, I'm gonna tell you that, yeah, I felt good when I marched up to the corner with the fire itself and there you were there, I said, oh, that's a good feeling, thank you very much.
Any other member of the podium wishes to address the council?
Jeff. Around the time before, I can ask about the Ninety-Hue Street, who are the principals that, uh, in that corporation?
Do we have that information, we already, um, there was one question asked and we didn't have the answer, do we know who are the principals?
Uh, I don't, Glenn, just your office now? Uh, just don't have it off the top of my head, uh, they are a group that is based in Long Island, Mark Cavelli, I believe is one of, is one of the principals named, I may be slightly wrong on the pronunciation of that.
Who signed the application, who is representing them? Two different questions.
Do you know who signed the applications representing them?
It's two different questions, I'm sure. Uh, who signed the application, I believe an officer of the company has to sign it and.
That's what I asked.
An attorney?
Yeah, that's what I asked.
Typically, it's two separate individuals.
Yeah, so that's why I'm asking, do you know?
I believe it was Mr. Cavelli, um, again, maybe I'm pronouncing wrong, uh, who signed it and, uh, Thomas Kelso was representing them as the attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to address the council?
Good evening, Madam Council President, Charles Cradville from New Brunswick, it's an honor and a pleasure to, uh, to speak to you today. I, uh, I was disappointed with, with how the last meeting ended and I think it's very important that, uh, the public who comes to the meetings gets their chance to speak. I know that the last meeting was also incredibly overcrowded and I see that many folks can't find a seat tonight, so I would raise once again my suggestion that this board or this council start having, uh, their meetings across the street in a room that's much more comfortable, uh, much easier for, uh, disabled people to, uh, make it to and just in general, uh, much more functional for, for the tasks that you have to do and, and to keep, uh, keep the public comfortable while they're, while they're trying to. I would like to start by asking, uh, if you could ask Captain Miller whether he stands by the New Brunswick Police Department's statement about, uh, the shooting involving Mr. Drake and Mr. Howard?
Captain Miller.
What's your, thirty-three commercial?
Thirty-three commercial, um, you stand by the statement?
And, and so why, uh, did the police department decide in this case to release the names of the victims and, uh, and the information that they did?
Why, why, is there such a difference, that is it first time that we have done that?
No. Well, I know there was a woman from Hillsborough who was shot and her name was not released. Why were these two gentlemen's names released, they're victims, no?
They're said recently.
I don't, I'm not sure of the particulars, but sometimes, depending on how the investigation is proceeding, information has to be held back. But I, I can't comment specifically on the Hillsborough cases, I don't know.
So, all cases in defense of the investigation is.
Okay, well, uh, Mr. Drake and Mr. Howard have contested what the police have said and, uh, I, I'm not satisfied that there was a basis to say what was said. I also need to ask about another issue that is incredibly serious in terms of public safety.
If you find dangerous to find in terms of this, then we're gonna just make Captain Miller, you'd like to make a statement on that?
I, I noticed, started to come up at the last meeting when I was on occasion over here, um, I had, had lengthy conversations with Mary Ann Victor's aunt, who started, I know she spoke with you, I explained to her the whole situation, which I'm not gonna discuss here in, in the council, and she is completely satisfied with what we saw. Thank you. So, uh, on October thirty-first, uh, there was a, uh, what I would call an outrageous number of alcohol, uh, related incidents in the city. There were, uh, individuals in positions of power who were under the impression that there were not, uh, sufficient space in the Robert Wood Johnson Hospital to take, uh, you know, patients and that other hospitals would need to be used. Uh, I've been informed by the hospital that that was not the case, so my first question is, why would someone think that the hospital, uh, did not have adequate space for patients on October thirty-first?
October thirty-first, I know we discussed it like two weeks ago, uh, not specifically, we discussed the, the amount of, uh, what it was reported and it was, um, we were told that it wasn't as, it was reported, so I don't know if you have any specific information of who is it that you're trying to say that they didn't find any, uh, spaces had probably, any rooms?
Yes.
Captain Miller, I don't know if you're familiar with, with that situation that night?
I can't, I can't speak for the hospital and I didn't report what you're referring to.
So, where, what was this information?
So, so I, uh, listened to the, the police scanner, uh, which has, uh, first responders and dispatchers speaking to one another and from the conversations, it was apparent that some individuals were, uh, some officials were under the impression that there were, that people could not be taken to Robert Wood Johnson and in fact, ambulances were diverted to St. Peter's Hospital in some cases, uh, and there was even talk of potentially taking patients to JFK Hospital in Edison, uh, due to a shortage of, of beds in the hospital. So, that's why I'm asking, well, why would someone think that? If they were in a position of power, why didn't they have the proper information? Or was the information they had correct and Robert Woods not telling the truth?
Captain Miller, do you have any?
I, I can't speak for EMS, they're, they're.
That's, that's, that's my next question, who answered those calls, is EMS dispatchers? So, that's why, that, that's why you heard, so I guess we would have to find out who EMS or what's the situation?
So, is, is the council concerned?
Absolutely, and I asked the question, I was reassured at, at that time that everything was taken care of, that it wasn't as bad as it was and everybody was taking care of, they were working, everybody was working together, yes.
Okay, well.
But now that, uh, EMS didn't have.
Did the name of the official?
What was, do you know the official, who is that?
I, I don't have the name of the official, I'd be happy to give you the audio, you can listen to it yourself.
Okay.
Uh, but, but it's very disturbing, um, who is in charge of it for the city?
Who is in, oh, the emergency responses? Or anything that happens?
These types of issues, hospitals.
Then, why is it, oh, emergency, um, I always get it, the, the title, it's like, emergency services that we have, the management, office management.
Office of emergency.
Yes, that we have. And we choose Director Roll as part of it, um, Director Roll.
Yes, and Mr. Cradville was talking, speaking of, uh, there was a, a breakdown in communication somewhere in the hospital, uh, we met on this, all the powers that be, the hospital, Rutgers, everybody was taking care of the issue and assured that it won't happen again.
So, uh, who was responsible for the breakdown in communication?
That information, Mr. Director Roll, do you have that information?
I don't have the information. There was, there was other people from Robert Wood, uh, Rutgers, uh, the hospital, the higher-ups, they also had no idea what was going on at the time, so.
So, whatever.
Somewhere, there was a lapse of information from dispatch to somewhere else.
But I think it's important to know that they met, that they recognized that there was a challenge and it was addressed.
And, and so how was it addressed and what is to be done to make, to make sure it doesn't happen again?
They have that, that, um, Director Roll, do you have that information?
I do have it, but I'm not going to divulge how it was addressed, though it wasn't.
Thank you.
Well, I think this is exactly why the Emergency Management Council needs to have a public meeting, so that the public can come and, uh, learn about, um, how, what, what's being done to keep us safe, especially in emergency situations which are coming up more and more frequently, uh, it's the least they can do, is have one public meeting and address these issues, I think it's, there's no reason for, uh, these things to be kept secret, in fact, the, the safety, the public safety benefits from, uh, additional, uh, people taking a look at it. Um, I would like to ask for a quick update on the Helmeta Animal Shelter.
Absolutely. Jennifer?
Helmeta was quarantined, uh, last week, as a lot of people know, um, that was on Thursday, the following day was Friday the nineteenth?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, sorry, Friday the fourteenth, um, a purchase order was authorized to make payment to Blue Make Kennels, who we are now sending our animals to. Um, a termination letter was actually sent to Helmeta, uh, on the eighteenth.
It was sent out today.
It was sent out today, okay. Termination letter was sent out earlier today, um, stating that we wish to terminate the contract based on their failure to perform since, uh, the shelter is quarantined for ten days and we can't send animals there or take them back out. So, right now, we're gonna be using Blue Make and this letter just went out to Helmeta. Um, right now, we, we owed them for the month of October and the first half of November, um, we'll still, I don't know what that bill is going to be based on the fact that they're closed for ten days and that we've sent them this letter of termination, um, but right now, we are not using them.
Do we have any, uh, probably any animals at the shelter?
At Helmeta, I'm told that there are two animals still at Helmeta, we can't retrieve them right now because of the quarantine, they're not letting any animals out, um, their owner has been identified, once the quarantine is lifted, animal control is gonna go retrieve them and take them home and then by that point, we won't have any more animals in the shelter.
So, what did the authorities find, SPCA and the county, what did they find that Mr. Loughlin and his assistant business administrator and the other city officials didn't find in their numerous visits?
Well, I, I would say that you have to include the county because we base our opium based on the county of, they, they are the experts. We did go unannounced, as we said before, and we didn't say, see anything that was out of the ordinary. At the last meeting, Mr. Tom Blackley recalled that he was there, that yes, there's, it's, it's, it's an animal shelter, but, um, and he went unannounced also with some other members of the, of the city. So, I think it's unfair the way you are, um, placing the question because we are the, the experts in the matter, which is the Minnesota County Health Department gave them the satisfactory, um, okay for them to be, so we followed what they, we did our due diligence based on their, uh, advice, based on the report and based on the observations of, of our staff. If later on, something happens that the, the SPSC needed to be called and all of that, well, I'm glad that somebody saw something because we went unannounced and we didn't see it, and the county health department didn't see either, obviously.
Okay, I'm, I'm just a little concerned that, uh, Mr. Loughlin was there the same week and, uh.
He was there, we still would have ever saw the city.
People said it was very disturbing when they saw that, so, um, I'm curious why it wasn't seen a few days earlier.
I would just like to respond to that, there's thousands of animals in that shelter and the fact that I didn't pick up on the fact that a couple of them were diseased, I, I think this is kind of, uh, kind of silly, we did our best to, uh, investigate what we heard was coming out of the shelter, we relied on the county, um, health inspection that happened on, the last inspection, I think, was late September, um, the, I believe, if I read the articles correctly, only four animals were taken out of the shelter, um, that were in some sort of sick, uh, condition, so, um, I'm not trained to recognize a sick animal, uh, having walked through the thing, uh, the, the complex for fifteen minutes, but we went down there with the best intentions and the best intentions were to protect the animals from New Brunswick that were down there, uh, if we didn't pick up on the fact that a couple were diseased, I, I, I'm sorry.
You're not a vet, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loughlin. Uh, I, I noticed George Street is closed, why was there no NICSIL alerts during rush hour closing a major street?
Do we know micro alert systems?
No.
Captain Miller, do you have any? We'll find out.
This would be another thing that Emergency Management Council could address, is when to use the.
That's not the emergency, I mean, it depends on what is the situation, so we'll find out.
Well, the NICSIL can be used in an emergency alert system and they could, they could do that, so, uh, I would suggest that be revisited by the Emergency Management Council. I'd also like to ask about a lawsuit, Magleys sued the city.
You'll find me the.
And, and Magleys versus Mahoney, what was the outcome of that case and why didn't the city do anything?
Do you know anything about that, Mr. Howard?
Doesn't do any kind of about at all, I'm not familiar with Magleys versus.
We don't know, Mr. Cradville, but we'll find out.
Thank you.
If I hear this or else.
I guess we do that. Is that the one that was back in two thousand and five?
Uh, oh, four.
Two thousand and four, that had to do with the downspouts in the, and the leaders, the gutters in those apartments over on, and once they rested over that way and we settled the case?
Thank you.
Can you tell me the size of the settlement?
There was no money.
Oh.
No money paid.
No money.
It had to do with inspections of the.
Settle out of your order.
Thank you. I'd be sorry, but is there any other comments on the phone?
Hi, I'm Andy Larvina, Twenty-Third Avenue, uh, New Brunswick. I'd like to know, um, if you can possibly speak, perhaps if we speak about a, um, a inspections complaint filed against Seventeen Mine Street, it's, uh, the tracking number is C T dash one four dash one seven eight and it was filed, uh, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, and I understand you don't carry around all the inspection complaints, but, um.
We went up to look into that, so we don't have that information, that's a lot of logistics.
Please, please look into that complaint, uh, if you'd like, I can, I can tell you it again, I don't know if you wrote it down, I saw you write it, but.
I wrote it down, I think it was the last one.
Yes, it did.
Yes.
Fantastic. Uh, these two properties at Seventeen Mine Street, uh, have been left to decay for the past five years, the complaint is egregious, there's holes in these buildings, it is very, very sad that a developer was allowed to come in, buy these properties, let them decay and then cite the light for the reason to redevelop the properties, that is sad, that we would allow this to happen in our, in our city, that these outside corporate entities come in here and think they can do whatever they want. And I would appreciate it if, I, because I know if I let my house decay for five years, I, I would have fines, uh, plastered all over my walls, so please, make sure these people are fined, make sure they pay or they fix the problems. Uh, it's sad to walk over there, there's no lights, it's very unsafe, it's very unsightly, it, it's a hazard, it, it, this needs to be corrected. Uh, also, speaking on that property, uh, the building that they plan on putting up, again, planning board, I understand, but Minesh is eligible to be a historic district in here in New Brunswick, the, the entire street just about is eligible for historic destination, this building would, uh, would severely hinder that. Uh, also, the parking deck that Rutgers is planning on putting up on Minesh Street would very, very seriously hinder the historic destination of Minesh Street and, uh, actually, Rutgers is, is according to law barred from putting up that parking deck on Minesh Street because the street is eligible, it is a public, uh, entity and cannot encroach on the, uh, eligibility of a historic district. The private people, they're private, they own their property, they can kind of do what they, they feel, uh, unfortunately, hopefully, you know, the city council can handle this and make sure they don't get away with too much, but, uh, but, uh, please, if, if someone can talk to Rutgers about that and, um, and make them aware that what they're trying to do is, is quasi-illegal. So, um, multiple people have been struck by vehicles, uh, here in New Brunswick, on Eastern Avenue and George Street, uh, one so seriously on Eastern Avenue, he's put him to a coma and, uh, just recently got out of that and, um, can we do anything on Eastern Avenue, possibly burying the utilities and putting up the nice lower light poles that we have on George Street?
Um, Mr. Goldie? We will have to look at, at that, um.
We will have to look at that. It's a county road, as we've discussed before with Mr. LaRina. As I think I answered a previous time, the city has gone out and has restriped some of the city sidewalks that are there on the cross streets. Also been in contact with the county and have asked them to see if they can do something, add a couple of the major intersections out there, including Eastern and Mine, and Eastern and, I believe, it's Bristol. The suggestion of burying utilities out there, I would love to see that, but what the request is, is multi-multi-millions of dollars that would have to be paid by the property owners out there, I believe. Burying utilities is extremely expensive. I know after Hurricane Sandy, that was looked at in Washington, D.C., which is obviously a much larger town, but just burying some of the main lines, there was going to be a billion dollars, and burying all the utilities in Washington is going to be $10 billion. It is enormously expensive to bury the utilities. We have that in the downtown area. Would love to expand that, but that's, PSC and J has to acquire that also, but the suggestion is going in the right direction. Would love to see that.
Along those lines, maybe we don't bury the utilities, but I know on Hamilton Street and Franklin, they have the lower lighting that's on the utility poles, and they have lighting on both sides of the street, which does not exist on Eastern. So again, I re-asked the question, maybe not burying the utilities, but at least, let's get some lights that are a little bit lower, so people can, cars can see the pedestrians that are waiting.
And that would be something with PSC and J to request.
Always working very hard to try to make the city more pedestrian-friendly, improving things like lighting conditions and the crosswalk and so forth, and Mr. LaRina knows we've done a lot of things, such as the flashing crosswalk and so forth, except for the funding that we have. We can't use them on Eastern Avenue for funding reasons, and also it's a county intersection.
Speaking of the light in crosswalks, what did happen to the light in crosswalk that's on George Street by the train station? Is that coming back when construction is done? On the bike, the bike, I think it's a construction of the bike.
Yes.
Fantastic. So concerning with George Street, I believe two people were hit on George Street, not as seriously as that gentleman who got hit on Eastern Avenue, but he was hit on, I believe, the pieces of George Street that are in the cities in downtown. And could we possibly consider closing George Street to vehicle traffic on very busy nights, i.e. Halloween or St. Patrick's Day, New Year's Eve, Wreckers football home games, just so that pedestrians can freely cross the street? And of course, if you're going to close the street, it would take a few police officers to be on each corner to close the streets. It would provide a safety measure and people there to help individuals who are obviously a little too intoxicated. And also, it would provide for the safe and timely transportation of emergency vehicles down that street, and a place for them to park when they need to go in and help somebody who's seriously injured. Is that a possibility? I don't see, for a couple of hours.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a possibility, but we would ask, I would ask Mr. Peddler what I see, and we'll see if that's possible.
Okay. I highly recommend that you take a look at that, and that's all I have. Oh, just as an aside, I have talked to the county about George Street by Route 18. They have told me that they're going to look into putting a crosswalk across George Street there. Whether it's going to actually happen or not, I will find out in upcoming meetings, but trying to get some stuff on at the county level for us in New Brunswick.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
To Mel Pittman, tonight, you will see in the street of Wreckers. I'm going to first start off by saying, I've been coming here for like four years. Every time I came to these meetings, I brought out racial oppression and racial discrimination, and also situations that dealt with black and mainly about how black people have been called nigger all throughout the city, from police officers, from Minnesota County prosecutors, from city employees, from superintendents, and I've addressed it to you, and it fell on your ears, and it basically fell on deaf ears. And I've come to the conclusion that, you know, maybe, you know, it's not a big deal to call black people the N-word nigger. So, you know, even though, you know, I got phone calls from Latino organizations, I got phone calls from the NAACP, and they said that they were really upset with how I conducted myself through the last meeting. And, you know, I come, when I come to this meeting, I have the weight of almost a whole city on my shoulders, you know? I've advocated for more Latinos than I did blacks. And for me, this feels like my people are being ignored. It upset me, and it frustrated me. And I did say some things that maybe I shouldn't have said at the end of the meeting. So, you know, I'm here today, because I said it last meeting, I had the courage to say it last meeting, and I'm here today to tell you in front of everybody, from the bottom of my heart, if you don't change your ways, I will say it again. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness.
Come on. Stand up on that.
Unbelievable.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do you both continue?
Timothy McDougall, I live in Somerset. Just got a few questions. Hopefully, I can get some answers. You got your mic. Start off with my, in regards to my internal affairs investigation. Before the final disposition of my investigation was rendered by Sergeant Shaw and Barnett Hoffman, did they make sure the Minnesota County's prosecutors office reviewed and approved the recommended disposition as you pursue it to the protocol?
Let me, before we begin, let me just ask if we are able to have, because the last time that we were talking about this, it was told to us that anything related to the cases, we couldn't discuss because of some litigation. I just want to be sure that that's still the fact of Mr. Hamilton, can we answer the question?
I don't have any litigation.
Just, this is the far as I know. Mr. Hamilton, can we answer the question for Mr. Matuwa?
I'm under the impression that there is litigation.
Do we have?
There is no litigation.
Let me find out, Mr. Matuwa, do we have?
I notice filed a notice of claim. That means that.
It's not a lawsuit, though.
Mr. Matuwa, let's wait. Let's have finish, and then we continue, please.
Just don't want to make that.
But just, no, no, you want to have a chance for this people with the process, please? Thank you.
He has filed a notice of claim, which is required under the Court Claims Act. When any person is filing a court claim against a city official, he has to give notice, and that notice is six months, I think, in advance of him filing a lawsuit. So he's filed a notice of claim, he's not filed an actual complaint.
So my question is, can we answer Mr. Matuwa's question that he posed right now?
I don't know what is the question, what is the question?
Yes. Can you repeat the question for Mr. Peddler?
Basically, Sergeant Shaw and Hoffman, when their decision passed, Minnesota County's prosecutor's office first, as required part of the protocol.
Threaten litigation, but I don't think we answer that.
Threaten, we don't know, and I don't, I didn't know that we should answer.
I don't know, and I, of course, yield to Mr. Hamilton's discretion on that.
So, Mr. Matuwa, at this time, I know it's.
I don't see how she doesn't know, and I believe she's the one that's supposed to notify her.
We are, like, the question that Mr. Hamilton is saying now, that we are not, I know, discuss anything to the cases, so can ask me. What I will tell you, and it's the same thing with the other cases, I stand by my statements before, that I think that there was some flaws in how they implemented the protocol, the process, and that's as far as I'm able to say at this point. As it was indicated, this might be pending litigation, one woman, there's a filing, so we are not, we cannot, we are not authorized to, we're pending any statement at this point related to the cases. But I will give you the floor to ask those questions, it's just that we won't be able to have the findings, but we won't be able to ask.
I guess I'm going to ask and see if you can open your hands. Does counsel made aware of internal affairs hearing investigation reports and conclusions in Mr. Shabazz's case and also my case? No? No? So the counsel never receives any kind of IA hearing investigation reports from Gaten or Hoffman from my case or Mr. Shabazz's case? Basically, keep coming, I know you miss me, but I keep coming to show that this process, you told me to go through the process, basically going to show that the process isn't working. It didn't work in his case, and it didn't work in my case. As far as Barnett Hoffman, the hearing officer, it was my understanding that he was supposed to be the finder of facts, playing neutral, but it's been obvious that he's playing, he's conspiring with New Brunswick Police Department and also covering up for them. He came up with an interim report, which is not part of the program, I mean, part of the protocol. Seems like since the process has been started, the protocol has just been violated from Charlie Gaten violating it, now you've got Mr. Barnett Hoffman also violating it. And my final decision sent by him, he basically spent, I think it was like 20-something pages, 20-something pages, basically just covering up for the officers. You know, he just told me a whole bunch of nothing, you know, and my understanding was he was supposed to be the finder of facts and play a neutral party in this, but it seems obvious that he isn't, you know? And he made up, he's basically making up the process as he goes along. He made up an interim decision to give Internal Affairs the opportunity to make up for their mistake, and then all of a sudden, I start getting calls from Internal Affairs, from block numbers, requesting my witnesses' contact information. And the last time I heard from Internal Affairs, they sent me a paper saying that my investigation was closed. And I guess I just want to ask, is my investigation officially been reopened? I mean, can Charlie Gaten or Mr. Captain Miller?
So I understand it's been a final report, and that Mr. Peddler, you see.
Which is the final report? Has my investig, because Internal Affairs been contacting me from block numbers? I had Sergeant Shaw call me twice from block numbers. I don't know why he's calling me block, using it before. He called me from the New Brunswick number. And also Captain Miller contacted me, asking for my witness' contact information. So my thing is, why are they contacting me? Is my investigation officially been reopened? Because if it hasn't, why are they contacting me?
Mr. Hamilton, I have a very disquieted思绪. It's Captain Miller.
I think Captain Miller's right there.
Because this is, like I explained before, this is something that some of it is in litigation, and the one might be, so we have to stand by, we were told that we are not to give too much disclosure, right? Because we are, so that's what I'm directing this question to.
Whether the police on their own have reopened the investigation, I don't know, but the final, the final order was added by Judge Hoffman. That puts an end to that aspect.
So the final order means that the case is closed? Technically closed?
No.
That particular page?
That part over there. So then probably that is a matter of who follows up, police department?
Some papers that I got from Barnett Hoffman, pretty much don't make sense to me. It's kind of unclear. I mean, that's why I'm coming here for some clarification. Is or isn't my case, has it, or what? I mean, I'm just asking a simple question. Has my case? Because my thing is, why is New Brunswick Internal Affairs contacting me?
Mr. Hamilton, can I make a comment here? Madam President, the hearing is over. The hearing part.
We understand that.
But now we, that's why.
Has my case been opened or no? I mean.
This is just, may I finish this, please? Mr. Matuwa, let's get as much facts as we can give you at this point. I know it's a lot, and we want some answers, and we search some answers, and we're trying to address them as best as we could at this time, based on the information that we have and that we are able to move to the topic.
Just very quick, yes, the hearing portion is concluded, and Judge Hoffman submitted his report. As to whether the Internal Affairs investigation has been opened or closed, I think the simplest thing to do is to return Captain Miller's call, to find out whether or not it's been opened or reopened or closed.
He's right there.
So Captain, you're.
He's right there.
But just, I don't know, what can you say? Go ahead, Captain, give it up.
Mr. McDougall has made statements in the council that he has witnesses that have information for his case. Sergeant Shaw attempted to contact him, he didn't respond. I sent a letter, I made a phone call, asking him to respond. If there is new information for his case, we want to interview those witnesses. We've got no response back from Mr. McDougall. We're waiting for his response. He spoke in the hearing council, saying he has two witnesses. I'm not going to discuss the details of the case, but we would like to speak with him.
Okay, so Mr. Matuwa?
I just don't get it.
Do you want to speak to Internal Affairs? Can you move, whatever it is that's next.
I'm just looking at you. Why do they want to interview my witnesses on a closed case? The last paper that I received from Internal Affairs.
What they have to explain to you, as far as, it's my understanding here, is that the hearing part of the process has been concluded when Judge Hoffman issued his report. So that's why that part concluded. So based on the information, if it's my understanding, correctly, if I'm wrong, the way I understand it, then when the two witnesses that are still pending, like you said, that you have two witnesses, that's why they're trying to reach out to you, to see whether these witnesses would like to talk to Internal Affairs, or if there's anything new information that they could provide to, you know, in terms of the case. Am I correct by stating that?
I think you are.
So, again, the process, I guess the hearing is closed, and I'm processing this also while we are trying. So now Internal Affairs is the one that has that part. It's your choice whether you want to talk to Internal Affairs or not.
Okay, I mean, I just want to put on record that this is just getting out of hand, it's kind of confusing, but just to put on the record, I do have my witnesses' contact information. You know, it took me some time, you know, because I've been working and doing all of that, but my witnesses, after four and five, I think it was like five or six years, they're still willing to come down and testify to what they seen that day. They seen what those New Brunswick police officers, they witnessed it, they provided, they witnessed affidavit at my hearing that day, and I provided that. I thought that was enough. But still, Mr. Hoffman chose to send me through more hoops, to get witness contact information and for me to write up some type of summary to provide for him, so I went out, and I did it. And to put that on the record, I will provide that to Captain Miller, and I also have something for the council, too, move up. This is my two witnesses' contact information, and also a letter from me.
Do we have to help you somehow, Mr. Matuwa? Do you make offers for us?
Oh, most definitely. I got it in this little pamphlet right here, but before we get to that, I just wanted to also provide you with a copy of my complaint against Charlie Gaten and also Barnett Hoffman. This complaint is to the council, since the council and, along with the mayor, appointed these individuals into their positions, this complaint is to you and I. I hope we get some type of disciplinary action out of this. You know, from the beginning, we've been showing how Charlie's been lying, and it's obvious how Mr. Hoffman and.
Don't move your feet, please.
All right.
No pointing, thank you.
All right.
You have to respect your attorney's.
So who wants corruption? Who wants to lie going on? You know, so that's my complaint, and I hope you look at it. And along with those papers are a copy of my witnesses' contact information. What else?
Fine, you're sorry, Mr. Matuwa.
Excuse me?
You're fine, Mr. Peddler.
I thought we extended it.
No, no, this is just, it was Charlie that I needed to want this part, but go ahead. Please, you say this, and that will be done.
Okay, well, hopefully, these papers are taken into consideration. You know, from the beginning, you told me to follow the process. I followed the process. It was a very, very long process, but I did it. I filed my internal affairs complaint. I already knew, I told you from the beginning, what was going to happen with that. I already knew they were going to rule in the officer's favor without interviewing my witnesses, and that was the whole basis of my argument. How can you rule in the favor of the officers without interviewing my witnesses? They did that, then I presented my case to the hearing officer. For that fact alone, that they didn't interview my witnesses, which is part of the Attorney General Guide Law, he should have gave me that recommendation straight right then and there, but instead, he threw me through more hoops, sent me to do all this other stuff, all this extra stuff, instead of just getting straight to the point.
I understand, thank you.
I don't understand that, you know? You're telling me to follow the process, I'm doing it, and it's obvious. So hopefully, you know, you can take that into consideration and change the process.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Bernie, I should ask something, Somerset, New Jersey.
Barnett Shawn, New Jersey. I am fully aware that the hearing, Mr. McDougal as well as Mr. Shabazz is concluded. But I want you to understand that your process doesn't work. You said that there was some flaw and there were many. Our chief complaint being that Ms. Gaden and Mr. Hoffman were biased. And when Mr. McDougal provides you with a copy of his decision, if you read it with an open mind, you'll see in there that during his hearing, Ms. Gaden provided Mr. Hoffman with all the information supporting the police's favor. She provided, um, the court paperwork that said Mr. McDougal allegedly pled guilty to something and paid fines. But she, so she provided nothing for Mr. McDougal to support what he was saying. She didn't obtain any information to our knowledge and to the, you know, to Timothy McDougal's knowledge to support both sides so that Mr. Hoffman could make a fair decision. In Mr. Hoffman's decision, once you read it, he gives very detailed explanations and facts for his findings and justifying why the police did what they did. But Mr. McDou- Mr. McDougal's key complaint was that he had witnesses that were not interviewed that violated Attorney General guidelines. But when it got to the area where Mr. Hoffman was to speak on that, he merely made a suggestion, which he says is synonymous to a recommendation. He used all these, this wordplay just to say he recommends that Internal Affairs speak to the witnesses. But he didn't elaborate. He didn't make the point of Mr. McDougal having a valid cause of concern that he didn't get a fair investigation when Mr. McDougal presented those facts. This is the bias. This is the him being, not being impartial. He shows favor to the police and then when he does touch base on the fact that Mr. McDougal had witnesses that weren't interviewed, he tries to bypass it really quick and still kind of lean towards the police officers by saying, "Mr. McDougal didn't state what these witnesses would, you know, the information that they would provide or what it, what it would be, how it would be relevant," basically. That's irrelevant. And that's why I don't understand why nobody can't seem to understand what the witnesses would have said four years ago is irrelevant to what Mr. Hoffman's job was. And I said this before and it seems like it just goes over everybody's head. The, the witnesses, the case is closed. You're saying, you're saying Mr. Captain Miller and Sergeant Shaw wants to talk to Timothy McDougal, but on a closed case, they want to interview the witnesses on a closed case? Why? The witnesses gave testimony that supported Mr. McDougal's allegations and was to find the officers guilty of something, then what? The case is closed. So I think what the problem here is that nobody wants to admit, Captain Miller nor this counsel, Ms. Gaden or Mr. Hamilton, nobody wants to just come out and say what should be said. The case is reopened because they can't interview witnesses on a closed case. You don't want to accept responsibility. Accept responsibility and stop playing these games. Why is he, why is he providing witness information on a closed case? They're going to talk to the witnesses for what? For what? And I know you guys don't have anything to do with it, but I want you to keep this in mind moving forward. You need to remove Ms. Gaden, remove Mr. Hoffman and appoint people of the community that can be fair and impartial. Because they have proven themselves not to be so. And I don't think that Mr. McDougal or Mr. Shabazz got a fair, a fair chance because the goal was to protect the city. That's what it's always been, that's what it's always going to be as long as you keep appointing people who have the city's best interests at heart. I'm tired of coming here. I have a family member who died any day of cancer. The last place I want to be is here begging you guys to give these people justice. Do something. Otherwise, we're going to be here every day presenting these truths to you because that's the one thing you don't get to vote on.
Noble Aaron Elshabazz, Somerset, New Jersey. I'm just going to follow up on what they said. I'm dealing with the issue of basically corruption going on here. Uh, the New Brunswick Police Department, including Internal Affairs, is systematically racist and corrupt. Sergeant Richard Roll's conviction with tampering with eighty-one complaints is indicative of this fact as well as Officer Brad Bedell's abrupt resignation after killing Barry Deloche. Further indications of this department's systemic racism and corruption is exposed by several of its own African-American police officers who filed two lawsuits against the very department they worked for. And in their lawsuits, these African-American police officers claim the police director used racially derogatory slurs and the mayor, Mayor Cahill refused to take appropriate remedial action when it was brought to his attention. Also indicative of this systemic racism is other New Brunswick City employees such as Ronnie Belafonte publicly called Ms. Gaden the N-word and he still works for the city, to my knowledge. I, I didn't hear anything about him being terminated. As far as I know, he still works for the city. So after using racial, a racially derogatory slur, calling Ms. Gaden the N-word, he still works for the city. This shows systemic racism within the, the city of New Brunswick. Also, when the African-American officer Lieutenant Middleton had a civilian complaint and lawsuit filed against him for police misconduct, even though a grand jury did not find any wrongdoing on this African-American officer, Mayor Cahill and the city of New Brunswick still agreed to settle the simple suit involving the black officer. But in my two cases that I filed against several Caucasian police officers, uh, Mayor Cahill and the city refused to agree to a settlement even though I have audio dispatch evidence from the city itself that proves Officer Brad Bedell, who killed Barry Deloche, violated my rights and committed perjury. And I got, had to prove, presented the proof to everybody, even to you at your church when you had, were gracious enough to meet with me. So you heard it and you know the proof that he lied and perjured himself. Yet, they won't do anything against the white officers, but they, they filed a settlement and agreed to a settlement against the black officers. So even though Brad Bedell and all the Caucasian officers lie, the city demonstrates and the mayor demonstrates that it protects the white officers at all costs while discriminating against its own black officers. That is systemic racism and corruption. Furthermore, the community liaison deliberately lied to me on several occasions, which I already demonstrated and proved with audio evidence, video evidence. It's already been proved. The hearing officer lied and distorted the law in his hearing reports and decisions in my case and in Mr. McDougal's case. Both the hearing officer and community liaison violated the protocols, which I clearly proved. And they even, she even acknowledged it, but just tried to justify it. She didn't deny violating the protocol. She just tried to give excuses to justify it. There is no excuse you can give violating the protocols. The protocols do not allow discretion. You must follow them to the letter of the law. Uh, when people file complaints, and this, this is a very important point to show systemic racism and corruption within the Internal Affairs process also. When people file complaints against cops, Internal Affairs, the Internal Affairs unit launches investigations against the complaining witness or the complaining victims of police abuse instead of investigating the crooked cops we complained about. Um, when I filed complaints against all these Caucasian officers who violated my rights on two separate occasions, instead of investigating the crooked cops I filed complaints about, they did a thorough elaborate investigation on me that spans back over twenty years. Now, the, uh, so this whole Internal Affairs process is a sham, a cover-up. Internal Affairs units is a sham, the hearing review is a sham, and the Ethics Board is a sham as Ms. Bradshaw admitted that while ethics complaints have been filed, received and reviewed in the past, none of them actually went to a full hearing. None. That shows this whole process is a sham. It's designed to roadblock us and take us through a point, make us jump through hoops, knowing in the end, the city is going to cover up everything. The mayor is going to cover up everything. Internal Affairs is going to cover up everything. The community liaison and hearing officer is going to cover up everything. And last but not least, um, Mr. Hamilton just lied on the record. So I'm going to expose again how you have crooked attorneys advising you and they are advising you in unethical manner. They lied on the record. He's a liar, a bold-faced liar. He says that the counsel, to, to Mr. McDougal's question, "Did the counsel ever receive any reports or information involving our Internal Affairs complaints?" His or mine, and he said, "No, y'all don't receive any information on Internal Affairs complaints." That's a lie. I received information that the counsel received information from Charlie Gaden, an elaborate report, a four-page report about me and how they investigated my history over twenty years ago. And, and in that same four-page report, it says that they're providing the, the counsel with a copy of Barnett Hoffman's hearing report. So you received a copy of the report and you received a four-page, you hear me? Is that what you're telling me? You sure you, I like you, Miss Escobar. You asked out everybody on this council. You're the only one that has ever publicly apologized to me, showed any concern. So please, please don't put yourself in a position...
I have never seen the...
No, no, no problem. Where is my folder at?
It's just, uh, so you know, um...
I'm just, hold, no, no, you just said something.
No, no, no.
And I come, I come prepared to prove everything I said. You should know, you should know that by now.
No, no.
I have a copy of it. Would you like to see it since you say you never saw it? And I'm like, I'm going to read it. Enter office, hold, let me finish now.
No, no, I'm going to give you, just give me the...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
The five minutes, I will.
Yes, ma'am.
So let me go to the process. I need...
This is my last thing, okay?
But that's what I, but I want to go through the process because I think we love it so we could follow the process. We have to, uh, ask the counsel. It's, it's my priority. If I want to, and so everybody want to give him one more minute to finish his statement?
Yes, ma'am. That's all I need is one minute.
Everybody's in accordance to that? Go ahead, Mr. McDougal.
Yes, ma'am.
One minute.
Enter office memorandum. Two, New Brunswick City Council members. From Charlie Gaden Esquire Attorney, Assistant City Attorney. Date, February fourth, two thousand and fourteen. Read, Internal Affairs Investigation, Noble Aaron Shabazz Hearing Report. Uh, attached, please find the report of Honorable Barnett Hoffman, retired judge, received by me, Ms. Gaden, on January twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, and forwarded to Mr. Shabazz via priority mail on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen. As you may recall, Judge Hoffman served as the impartial hearing officer pursuant to the protocol established by Mayor Cahill in January two thousand and twelve. A copy of the protocol is attached for your reference. Now, I didn't want to read the whole report because I could go into the whole report, but it's four pages.
I just want to clarify something. We got that report for, from Ms. Gaden. Well, we didn't get, you said something about Internal Affairs and investigations?
That's what it is.
I didn't.
It, it, it says right here, I, no, I, my question was very specific. Do you receive anything, any type of report, anything regarding Internal Affairs investigations in his case and my case?
In his case, no.
I, I, right, but I said in my case and his case. You said no, he said no. He answered the same thing to him, that y'all don't receive anything. And even at other council meetings we've been at, we've asked and y'all have already said that. So I already knew the answer was going to be no before I came here.
No, no, I just want to hear that that, if our report is just the beginning...
No, I just read to you what it said. They said, it says, it says right here that they provided you with a copy of the hearing report. Y'all told us y'all don't get copies of the IA hearing reports. And if I go on further, I'm, see, because you, you're forcing my hand. I, I didn't know. I could read further how they go into telling you everything about the Internal Affairs investigation. So when you say you don't receive information, this is a four-page detailed letter talking about the Internal Affairs investigation that they did and everything in there is about how they investigated me.
Okay, so I would ask, Mr. Shabazz, I don't have much time here for our... He was a copy, he was having a group there because I don't recall receiving that. And I'm for sure know that nothing about Mr. McDougal I have received. So if I get a copy that, that's, that's, I have never seen it. So I thank you. How much do I owe you for this? I thank you so much. But please, if you could, I know, I have nothing to say, not for Mr. McDougal either. So I just want to finish with that. And I just want to...
I'm going to make sure you get a copy, but just know, up to this point, like I said, you've been the only one on the council that I have respect for. It seems to me that they are now having, the rest of the corrupt members such as corrupt, uh, uh, Attorney Hamilton, is having a very negative effect on you right now.
So what I'm, what I'm going to tell you, like I said to Mr. McDougal...
They put you on a gag order on you, basically. You, you can't even speak now.
What I will tell you is because of the litigation, this will be my final statement and the time is up. Again, I am not, I cannot talk about it in the way that the case...
I know, because they put a gag order on you. That's why they're corrupt.
But as I said before, Mr. McDougal, I stand by my statement.
I know and I respect you for that. But stop letting them put a gag order on you. I met you at your church and you showed me you are a good Christian woman. And as a good Christian woman, you can't serve two masters. Scriptures tell you, you can't serve two masters. You gotta serve Christ, not serve this corrupt ass sick.
Thank you. I'm happy that we finished motion, right? We stay with the...
Yes, Anthony and I, we have Tony Jefferson again. Uh, just a quick question. When does the community liaison come up for reappointment by the council? Or when was she, what month was she appointed in? It should be twelve months after that, is that correct?
It doesn't, we are, you know, we approve the appointment of the position.
Okay, so...
What is that? I don't know what this is, Anthony. Do you still have...
I have to go back a little bit, I don't know.
Who will look at, at that and with that information, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. McDougal?
Um, before we close, I just want to say two things. November is no shade of November and what we've been doing, I didn't ask for this for any reason. We wanted to, um, give light to men's, men's health specifically, prostate cancer, prostate cancer awareness. If you have a man in your family, if you are a male and you're over the age of forty or any, especially if you're an African-American male at a younger age, thirty-five, get somebody to get checked, you know, encourage them to go get checked. Um, just recently, I lost a coworker and I had another coworker who, um, he was prostate, he's a prostate cancer survivor. And then we just lost a coworker two weeks ago and he had just got diagnosed like five months ago. He was working with us. Within five months, he was gone. When they diagnosed him, he was at stage four already. And he passed away recently. Um, so if you can, we just, just to bring awareness to it, if you could, um, you know, encourage males in your family or if you're a male, encourage them to go get checked. Also, the last thing is, we were able to march. I had an honor of marching two weeks, last week? I think last week in the Veterans Day Parade. And that's one time in the year that we recognize veterans, you know, for all the things that they've done. But we can truly honor every veteran, everybody that's served America by making sure that, you know, we give to veterans organization, make sure that they get the best mental health counseling when they come home. I know a few people that are, might let, younger than me, much younger than me, that have mental health problems right now because they're adjusting, they're coming home right now. They don't have the services and a lot of them got PTSD, twenty-two, twenty-three years old. When they get PST, the PSTD, they can't, uh, PTSD, they can't cope with things. A lot of them are turning to drugs right now. A good friend of mine, her son, twenty-three years old, he did two tours in Iraq and right now, he's having trouble adjusting. And he's right now, he's strung out and addicted right now. So we got to make sure they get those proper services, make sure the homelessness that a lot of, a lot of them are going through right now, you know, a lot of veterans right now, they serve our country, thirty, twenty, thirty, forty years old, they're going through homelessness right now. We got to make sure they get the best healthcare. And finally, one of my pet projects that we're doing is a lot of them, after they pass away, a lot of them have been abandoned. You know, they can't, the families can't afford proper burials and a lot of them have been cremated and are sitting in warehouses inside funeral homes. And people who serve our country, they deserve a lot better than that. They deserve a lot better not to be sitting in funeral homes. So if you can find the charities, I can mention them to you. I don't want to mention right here. But there are charities right now that make sure that they do get a decent and proper burial down at Doyle Cemetery. And that's the way we can truly honor our veterans than to just give them a parade one time every year. That's it.
Any other comments, Paul? I'm just going to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Can we take a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Eaton? Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlati?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.